State Junie.
My name is Drissa Colignesi, resident of Southbridge. I was here in December last year asking for permission to start an interact club and to provide funding for it. Well, I have to tell you, we have a constitution, bylaws, signed by the advisor and the kids. We're going to be having, hopefully, a joint meeting with our Rotary Club and the Interact Club, probably next month, and kick it off in the fall. I want to also say that this past week at Rotary, we had students from the sophomore class who are going to be participating in what we call Ryla, which is Rotary Youth Leadership in Action. This is something that Rotary pays for, and we have six individuals within the tri-community. We do a mix between Southbridge High and Bay Path. We also have alternates chosen, and the kids came and addressed the club. They did a wonderful job. You need to be very proud of them. I have to say, we've gotten more done within the last year with the team in place at the high school than we have in a long time. I mean, we've actually just been able to have conversations, which has been difficult in the past, and the...I just wanted to say that the Rotary Club appreciated that and actually gave the administration, Melissa in particular, a round of applause, and so did the kids. So I wanted you to know that as well. The other thing, you have an agenda item here on Superintendent Search Committee. I don't know where that stands, but I'm here to volunteer, put my name in as a member of that committee. I've been on a Superintendent Search Committee in the past. I'm currently on the Town Manager Search Committee. I've been on School Council, PTA Treasurer, and now I'm the taxpayer, helping to foot the bill for the school system, and know that we need to do the best we can to bring the system to where it can be. Southbridge has got great bones, and our system has great bones, and we need to bring it to fruition. So I'd rather than be one that is always complaining, I'd rather just be proactive and say, you know, I'd like to volunteer for that if you put a group together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the community that would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Approval of the Consent Agenda. On this evening's consent agenda, we have meeting minutes from April 8th, Committee of the Whole, April 14th, 2015, both the public hearing minutes on the FY16 budget and the regular school committee meeting, and April 28th, the regular school committee meeting. We also have first readings of two policies, one being, to be named File FH, Improvements to School Property by Youth Organizations Booster Clubs and Other Organizations, and File KCD, Public Gifts to the Schools. That is a revised policy. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Mrs. Quinney.
Madam Chair, I request File KCD, Public Gifts to Schools, be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinney. I will move that to new business. It will be now 10C.
Thank you.
We can discuss it then. Are there any other items? Dr. Page?
Yeah. Item, the improvements to school file, item B1, Improvements to School Property by Youth Organizations. Mr. Clubbs, I just have a couple of suggested wording changes.
Okay.
Just to keep it consistent.
All right.
Very minor. I don't know whether they really need to be removed or just referred back to subcommittee.
We'll remove this from the consent agenda, and then we'll discuss those changes also on 10C.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we need a show of hands to approve tonight's consent agenda if there's no objection. Thank you. All approved, unanimous. Chairperson's announcements. This evening, I just want to announce that kindergarten screening begins by appointment on May 18th. It will run May 18th, that entire week. If your child will be five years old as of August 31st, 2015, and you're planning for your child to attend Eastford Road School, it's important that your child participate in the screenings. If you have not been contacted about a date, please call Eastford Road School to schedule an appointment. I don't have the entire number here, 508-764-5460. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, the Wellness Advisory Committee Report. Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Wellness Advisory Committee met four times this year, consisting of Southbridge Public School Representatives, nurses Karen Cheka, Lisa Bashan, Karen Prue, and Nadine Casey, wellness teachers Dustin Yakubian and Ashley Caprera, food service representatives, Nick Billis and Shirley Yanka, building administrators William Latoy, Melissa Earls, and Kathleen Potter, parents Linda Cross and Tammy Dupont, and students Callie Matthew and Ken Allard, as well as community members Jasmine Rivas, Glenn Jupno, Betsy Pepple, and Sue Fafford-Derocher, and myself. So this was the committee that was appointed by the superintendent. As I said, we met four times this year. We spent time reviewing the youth risk behavior survey data. We identified and prioritized concerns. We wrote a letter to the superintendent that I read for you all last meeting. The plan is to administer the YRBS in the spring of 2016 to see if any programming that has been implemented has been impactful on risk behaviors of students. We also reviewed updates from building wellness committees. Some committees were well-established, others are still working on getting established. The winter was a bit of a challenge for meetings this year. We discussed the school nutrition program and different offerings. We discussed ways to increase physical activity of students throughout the district, and that is what we have. So I would like to thank everyone who volunteered their time to participate in the Wellness Advisory Committee and for their dedication to the students of Southbridge and their health and well-being. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven is Reports. Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Mr. Boyver. Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Saturday, May 9th, the National Honor Society participated in its third annual spring car wash. Thanks to the support of all who came, the National Honor Society raised over $600, our most successful car wash yet. Tomorrow, the National Honor Society will hold officer elections for next year. It will be a secret ballot, and the positions will be announced in the afternoon. On Thursday, May 14th, National Honor Society is hosting its third annual spaghetti shebang in the Southbridge Middle High School cafeteria. It's $5 for an all-you-can-eat spaghetti supper. Funds go to a local charity and senior National Honor Society member scholarships. There will be music, face painting, and raffles, which include movie tickets to Cinemagic, a Hanover Theater membership package, and signed Red Sox memorabilia. AP testing ends Thursday, and there's three tests remaining. Class elections will be held within the next two weeks, and prom is May 22nd. As tradition, please join us at the column for pictures and a look at us dressed in our finest. Seniors exams are Memorial Day week, and next week is Senior Week, which is including their graduation rehearsal. Graduation is June 6th in the evening, held at McMahon Field, weather permitting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. School Committee, I'm sorry.
A couple things for him.
Oh, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Threw you to Cameron. You didn't mention a time for the spaghetti shebang. Do you know what time that starts, Cameron?
It starts at 4:00.
And then till what?
4:00.
Till 6:30?
3:00, 4:00 to 6:00.
Graduation.
Graduation's June 5th.
June 5th.
Did I say May?
June 5th.
Oh, I meant 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Please come early. Now, reports for the school committee, Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Dr. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Budget and Finance Subcommittee met Monday, May 4th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at M100 Coal Avenue. Topics discussed included the superintendent's feedback received from the town council and town manager regarding the FY16 proposed budget, the effect of the budget, the effect on the budget of union contracts that were negotiated this year, review of a master list of all users and tenants, and revenues generated from Coal Avenue with its associated operating costs, and we received an update from the superintendent regarding relocating central office and the conversations with the town officials in that venture. And also, there was a discussion of the annual utility expenses for each building. We reviewed current central office organizational charts, and we discussed the scope, content, and frequency of the finance director's report to the school committee. And the next meeting is currently scheduled for June 1st, Monday, at 6:00, 2015.
Thank you, Dr. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, the negotiation and IVB subcommittees. Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report for tonight's.
Okay. And we've already given the Wellness Advisory Committee report. So on Policy Subcommittee, I'll report that the Subcommittee met on May 4th. We discussed a couple of policies very briefly, sent them forward for first readings, but they do need some revision, so we will revisit those. I have no future meetings scheduled at this time, but we'll schedule one if we determine later on that we need to schedule a meeting. We also discussed some information relative to when we had received the report from the Department of Education relative to suspension rates and discipline rates and that sort of a thing, but we felt that we needed some additional information in order to explore that, so we held that off. As I said, no future meetings scheduled, but if we determine ones necessary later on in the agenda, we certainly can schedule that. We'll move to a report of the Finance Director, Mr. Osborne.
Sure. The Finance Office is working towards building multiple possible scenarios for the budget. First, to include the budget voted by the EHS Subcommittee about two weeks ago, as well as a few other possible scenarios on behalf of the superintendent. We're also beginning the process of closing out the year. We're starting to put some halts on new purchase orders, things like that, going into the new year, going into the end of the year, rather, so that we can close out the year cleanly. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Now, report of the Superintendent, Ms. Stanton.
Thank you. Shared with the committee this evening our upcoming summer school program offerings. To date, we are going to be offering MCAS Assistance Program for grades nine through And just for clarification, these are the grant-funded programs. We will be offering a middle school, high school inclusion course. We will be offering Course Work for Work Experience Program. We also will be offering elementary inclusion, and we will be offering preschool kindergarten inclusion over the summer as well. We are moving forward also with the high school credit recovery and the middle school credit recovery classes, and those I will be moving forward for a vote next meeting. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving along. Agenda Item Number Eight, School Committee Actions. Vote to approve the 2015-2016 Southbridge Public School Calendar. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes the motion. Mr. Abrahamson seconds. The motion, is there any discussion on the calendar? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question. I don't know if we've touched upon it. I know it was mentioned, but I don't think we discussed it. On the school calendar, it says the elementary trimester end dates. Have we decided to go with the trimester?
Yes.
And what was the process behind that?
So that was a discussion at school ILTs, and then also at our IRS meetings, and it also was the discussion as we moved to a standards-based report card through the Curriculum Review Committee.
And everyone's on the same page with that in regards to the teachers, and are we going to inform the parents at all?
Sure. So, yes, we will have to do some education around standards-based report cards. We will also be looking at providing support to staff as they complete those and implement the curriculum in a trimester.
Thank you. And then, just my other question. I know that the open house dates are different on the calendar, and parent-teacher conference dates are usually held after school. I don't know if we know the times of this yet.
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
For the open house as well as the parent-teacher conference?
Just parent-teacher conference.
Do we know open house?
Mr. Latoy?
We're moving those up a little earlier for the parent-teacher conference. We'll announce that, what we're going to be doing right now, for a joint agreement on that, so that it'd be a little earlier, because on the first day, teachers are better developed back to school, so that they will be able to stay there, have a student community classroom, and be able to, students just coming to schools will be able to get a feel for what school is and where their classes are, and be more comfortable with it. So, right now, we're leaving at 4:00 to 6:00, as the times for those open houses, but they haven't been finalized as of yet.
And then, just a point of clarification, and I know with the existing calendar, I know sometimes parents didn't have report cards prior to parent-teacher conference dates, and I know the middle, high school parent-teacher conference dates are actually after the parents receive the report cards, and my only concern is, I know that they can talk to the parents about, like, what the grades might be, and the students might have a chance to improve upon that, but I just didn't know if we had any feedback on what actually might work better, having the parent-teacher conference dates prior to the parents getting the report cards. I know they'll have progress reports or after, because I know it's been mixed in previous school calendar dates.
Sure. So what we're hoping for is to align not only a discussion about report cards or progress toward the final grade on a report card, but also our internal assessment data, so the parent-teacher conferences would include more than just a conversation about the report card or progress on grades.
Great. Thank you. So, oh, sorry, one more point. Just a point of clarification. So technically, when we vote on this school calendar, it's pretty much just the dates, because I know a lot of it is pending contract negotiations.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, Vote to Approve the 2015-2016 Southbridge Public Schools Calendar. Show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Thank you. The next School Committee Action, Agenda Item 8B, is a vote to appoint Murphy, Lemire, and Murphy as supplemental legal counsel for the district.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Quinney.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Abrahamson. Is there any discussion on this motion? Just as a note, that this Murphy, Lemire, and Murphy already serves as special education legal counsel for the district. This would just be to provide supplemental services. Mr. Abrahamson?
Supplemental, excuse me, Madam Chair. Supplemental and option, correct? I mean, they are another option. It is not adding.
Correct.
Right, as some might assume. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, show of hands, please. That's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Osborne has requested that we move Agenda Item 8C from the agenda. This was a vote to approve student activities accounts. Just needs to do some refinement to that, so we'll be voting that on the next agenda. Moving on now to unfinished business. We are at the Superintendent Search Future Planning. Just a few updates for the publics, for the public, and also some for the school committee. This evening, it was our intention to have at 6:00 a presentation by a search, potential search firm. That company notified me last week that they would not be coming, and so of the five potential companies that I contacted, just for review, two of them declined, one never responded, MAS C has presented, and then the fifth company now is withdrawing from consideration. So we have the presentation that we received from the Mass Association of School Committees. So we need to decide as a group how to move forward, and we need to have discussion of what we want to do effective July 1st, and how we want to proceed, if we want to proceed with a search, what that would look like, what the timeline of that would be. MAS C is the last player in the game. They obviously will help us if we need their help. I spoke to them last Thursday, notified them about the withdrawal of the last company, asked for their advice, and was told that they believe this district needs continued stability before it should begin a search. But that is ultimately our call up here. They obviously would assist us if we needed to, because they have to. So with that being said, I'll open it up for discussion. Mrs. Congdon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recently, the school committee was sent an application of a very qualified candidate expressing interest to be the superintendent of the Southbridge Public Schools. It has been implied by many that there was a shortage of superintendents and that no one wanted to come here, and it was too late to do a search. Many search firms, as the chair said, wouldn't support Southbridge in a search or even come to do a presentation. I feel that in light of the recent resume and application we were sent, at this time, I would recommend to the school committee that we consider doing an expedited search. I know community members, as we had one tonight, have previously have expressed an interest in being part of the search team and process. I would like, if we do proceed to do a search, I would like the process to be as transparent as possible. My recommendations to the school committee would be to post for this position, internal through school spring and through MAS C, and form a search committee so that we can review the applicants. I have given much thought to this overall process, and we'd be willing to oversee with the help of MAS C the process and timeline. I feel we owe it to the community and the children of the district to at least be open to accepting applications and to the candidate that is interested in letting the community have a chance to be a part of the process. That's my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think at this point, based on the information that we've received from MAS C, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I think it would be wise, as we've all stated, to have a search process. I do recall members saying that the process, that we weren't unilaterally qualified to make a unilateral decision, and that the decision that we make may very well outlast our tenure, that appointment. So I think we need to take a very deliberate and thoughtful time and process. We've discussed surveying the community. We have yet to do that. I think that there are a lot of steps in the superintendency's search process that have been skipped over in accepting resumes to the school committee, as a search committee should review applicants and resumes and then forward those on to the school committee. So I think we've skipped over a couple of phases in that process, and I think, as we've all said, as the community has requested, we need a thoughtful process to move forward, and every opportunity for stakeholders to partake in that process. And there are many stages to that, and one of them would be deciding what we want and approving a leadership profile. We haven't had any discussions about what the qualifications, what we need, our needs assessment. We've gotten a lot of information from a variety of different sources of what our needs are and how we're going to address them. I don't think we, as a school committee, have had that conversation yet. We haven't heard any input from the community in what they feel like the district needs or the community needs, or what particular roles they would like to play in that process, and how that all rolls out. I appreciate people stepping forward and wanting to be part of the process, but I don't think rushing it, and I know it had been said previously that rushing into things has ended up in bad decisions. So at this time, in order to stabilize the district, to be able to have a thoughtful, community-based, community input soliciting, and transparent process that we can all follow the process as laid out for a search for a superintendent, I move that the Southbridge School Committee extend Cheryl Stanton's contract through June 30th of 2016 in order to stabilize the district and allow us to have a thoughtful process.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I was hoping we could have continued discussion, which we likely still can. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Mr. Alivo.
I want to say that I fully support a search for a superintendent. We've had the community voice come out and say, this is what they want. We want to give them that chance. We've asked for that participation over and over again. We've butted heads with town council, school committee. It's ridiculous what this has gotten to. MAS C has said that they would do the survey. MAS C also said, in crunching numbers, that they were the least amount that would affect the district in a search. I am 100% behind this, and I think that we need to proceed with this. I think stability, yes, we need it in the school, but something needs to start now. Something needs to change. Something needs to happen, be it at central office, be it at the schools, whatever. This community is asking to take part in this. I've, I move, I push to move forward with this search committee as soon as we can. That's my thought.
Thank you. Any other? Dr. Page?
My thoughts very much echo those of my colleague, Mr. Alivo, in the sense that I think we've actually been delaying this a bit too much in terms of initiating a search. There's no reason, to me, to delay the process any longer. I think MAS C has offered their help. I know that they have said they think we should wait. I respectfully disagree with that notion that we should just sit back and wait. I think there's no harm in assembling a search committee. We have documents that were prepared by most of this, most of this school committee that's sitting here as to what they thought they wanted in a previous superintendent, and I've had the opportunity to review that, and I think it looks like it's in pretty good shape. I think there's probably some very minor tweaking that would go on by relatively simple caucus of the current school committee in terms of identifying what that, sort of the profile of the superintendent should look like. I don't, I don't think that should be a lengthy, egregious process to get it initiated, to get a search committee formed, to start accepting applicants and reviewing applicants, and I don't see any reason to really delay proceeding. I'm not a fan at all of long-term interim positions for any reason. This is no offense to anybody as an individual. I don't know that that's actually necessary in this case to be making one-year appointments. We may be able to conclude sooner than that. I realize we may be having to ask our existing acting superintendent to act for a little bit longer, but I think it's probably unnecessary at this point in time, at this juncture tonight, to be extending that contract for a complete year in a interim acting role. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments from the school committee? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My two cents is that, and, well, before I start that, just a question through you to Ms. Congdon. When you say expedite, what does that mean?
What that means is I would call the school committee to have a special meeting next Wednesday, to sit and go over the timeline that I provided every single one of you individually, to have a job description that we all come to agreement on. We had a previous job description for the superintendent of Schools job posting position, to have that discussion, to discuss what we would like to see in a search committee, which, since MAS C would be, would have to help us, I had waited to see if we would be able to have a consultant do that, but nobody stepped up. So that meeting next week would discuss all of that in great detail, and that would be what that process would entail.
Okay, so I understand that part, but just for the community's information, the timeline, so to speak, for getting somebody in place, what would be that, that goal?
So the timeline would be that we would start this process next week. Within a couple of weeks, we would put that out to... Within a couple of weeks, we would put that out to post for a position. The subcommittee, well, the search committee would meet within a couple of weeks to have a plan in place, a meeting. And let me just pull it up. I have it. And then we would review those applications, the search committee, have time to interview candidates. The timeline is very crunched, but if the search committee can't recommend a candidate to the school committee, then it's put on hold. It's very little cost to the district that this would entail. We could vet all the candidates, internal, external, within, till the end of July. If the school committee doesn't come to an agreement or if the process seems to be too rushed, then it's forwarded on to the next school committee. It doesn't have to be as rushed. If MASC can put together those surveys, it just seems like we keep waiting and dragging our feet and waiting for this process. We've been waiting months now and I think that if we continue to just wait, then we're back at square one. And if we have people that have been interested, that have, are very experienced for the job, I think that that just doesn't do anybody in this community justice if we just keep dragging our feet and waiting and not making a decision to do anything. Did that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yep. Okay. Thank you very much. My thought about this is, is that I clearly agree that a search committee needs to happen. We talked about this back in February for all the reasons that we all know why. I have a problem with the, the expedition or the, to have it be expedited. It just, we all, we were all set on a plan and yes, nobody came to help us and that's a sad thing, that's a sad reality. So kind of like you got to take the hen and take the bull by the horns and, and kind of do your own thing. And I, I respect Ms. Congdon for her motion in trying to attempt that. However, my personal opinion is, is that at this stage of the game, it just doesn't sit right with me that we're trying to change the process for a person. And yes, that applicant was unsolicited at best, looks fantastic on paper, and I'm sure there's other people out there that likewise look fabulous on paper and are worth pursuing. When MASC Glenn Kucha, the executive director of MASC, was here, he stated that at this point in the calendar year, there are zero, there are next to zero applicants out there. That September to October is when people are looking. Now, I get Mrs. Congdon's point that if you wait, perhaps this applicant may have moved on to greener pastures. And perhaps that's the case, but at this point in time, I cannot support this, clearly because I'm looking at it as changing the process for a person and that is not something that I can look at myself in the mirror and support at this stage of the game. So I will not be voting for that particular motion. However, I would support Mrs. Quinney's motion and appoint Cheryl for another year so that the process can be done in a way that is deliberate, that involves integrity, and whoever is chosen at the end of that process is the right person. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Abrahamson, did you want to say? Is there any other discussion on this? Dr. Page?
I just want to, I just want to follow up. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't get the impression that maybe calling this an accelerated search or expedited search is not maybe the right language. I think, and you can correct me if I'm inaccurate, I think it's expediting starting the process is what I'm advocating for, is let's get MASC in, let's get a meeting of the school committee, let's finalize our job description, what we want, let's get it out there. There's no harm in starting now. If we start now, that gives us more time to accrue candidates and these, we may be getting people who would be interested in starting a year from now. We may, we have candidates that, for whatever reason, could fill the role this year or mid-year or something like that. I'm not, I just don't like the idea of putting it off anymore in terms of getting this process initiated and get it started and let's see what, let's shake the trees a little bit and see what falls out. I'm personally sick and tired of hearing people say there are no superintendents out there that will come to Southbridge. I don't, for one, believe that. We have in our midst somebody who came to Southbridge and is currently an acting superintendent. So you can't tell me there are, nobody wants to be a superintendent of schools in Southbridge who's qualified. So I think we need to, to, to get the process going. That's my, that's my opinion on the matter. Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon?
I just wanted to say that this, I just feel like I'm back where I was last year, giving somebody a one-year deal. And I think that we're not doing what we said. We said we'd do a search. We're giving somebody another one-year contract and we're not doing a search. We're not doing what people are asking us to do. We're not opening it up so the community has a say in who's going to be our leader for the next year. And I'm sorry to everybody who wants this process to be as transparent as possible. We're going to give another one-year deal, which I'm not in favor of, and I'm in favor of doing a search, vetting all these candidates. There seems to be candidates that want to be here and, you know, if it takes a long time, then it takes a long time. I mean, I have a timeline set up, but if it goes longer than that, but at least we're giving the public a chance to have a say and not make the same decisions that we keep making over and over again and ending up right back at square one. And the people that suffer are the kids of the community. So I'm not in favor of a one-year deal.
Thank you. Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair, there's perhaps been no greater interference as there has been in our obligation as a school committee to hire a superintendent of schools. Chair and the vice chair of Southbridge Town Council took to the press an attempt to coerce this committee. Other councils have weighed in on this and the social media have voiced opinions as well. All have centered on having an open search for the next superintendent of schools. I do believe in the search process, Madam Chair. But after witnessing the last search for a superintendent of schools, I've been wary. Those who find history useful as a guide to understanding why we are where we are today will find that that search was thoroughly and utterly corrupted by the sitting school committee at the time. They discharged the legitimate search committee and appointed themselves as a search committee. Sounds like déjà vu. As a result, there were four candidates interviewed. Two had been interviewed and moved forward by the legitimate search committee and two had been selected by the school committee. I sat in these chambers, Madam Chair, and watched the first three interviews. I left during the fourth one because the candidate was so utterly flawed. I did not, in my wildest dreams, believe he would be selected. As you know, Madam Chair, that's exactly the candidate the school committee selected. We were assured by some members of the school committee at the time, two of them who actually traveled to that candidate's district, that this candidate was the perfect choice, exceeding all others by far. Well, Madam Chair, I don't need to review for you the rest of the story. In short, a corrupted search for Southbridge's superintendent of schools resulted in bringing to our district a flawed individual who made some very bad decisions. As some wise philosopher once said, Madam Chair, that ain't rocket science. So, Madam Chair, as a member of this committee, I have needed some assurance that the next search will be open, honest, and fair. With what I thought was that assurance, I voted along with every other member of this committee to conduct such a search for our superintendent. Apparently, I was mistaken that every member wanted this kind of search and the discussion before us shows that. We're being asked to expedite the search process because some potential candidate has asked to be considered for a position that has not even been posted yet. This entirely subverts the search process where a search committee guided by a search firm selects the candidates that best meet the criteria set by this school committee, criteria that haven't been written yet because that's part of the guided search process. Beyond that, the applicant for a position that doesn't yet exist must be called into question. A candidate, I might add, who is so interested in Southbridge schools that he did not even know who chaired this school committee despite our being here every two weeks discussing the needs of our school and our students. In no way, Madam Chair, would I ever support this expedited search process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Levo?
I want to say that while what my colleague said, part of that past superintendents have brought us here to the point that we are at today. In actuality, it is a one-year appointment that has brought us here to the point that we are today. And I find it hard to believe that people are only looking for jobs, especially superintendent jobs, September and October. I, I fully support moving forward with this and having people be able to say what they want, to hear the community, to be able to have their voice in what we're doing. That's what we're here for. We're not here for the social media. We're not here for, for the town council. We're not here for the school committee or for the fun it is to sit up here. We're here for the kids and for this community. And in order to do that, we have to have a transparent search and in order to do that, we need to move ahead. It is hard for me to believe that people are only looking for a job as a superintendent September and October. I think, as my colleague said, we need to shake that tree and see where we stand. We have the option to extend our superintendent, our acting superintendent, if need be, but we can't get to that point if we don't start now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'd like to weigh in here a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To not call this an expedited search, I think, would not be truthful. The school districts that are currently looking for superintendents starting July 1st that didn't have cutoff dates for applications in March or absolutely the latest May, the first week of May, to appoint for July 1st, everyone that is currently looking at this time for a superintendent starting July 1st that hasn't already started the search process is looking for an interim superintendent for one year. Other committees are looking to appoint people for 2016. So this is, to not call it expedited, this is extraordinarily expedited. And I'm not saying that we should not move forward with the search. My motion is to name Cheryl for 2016, to have a consistent person in that role, to move forward with the work that has begun and is going on for students, to have some consistency for that period of time while that search takes place. I think we can certainly meet next Wednesday and talk about what that profile looks like and move forward, but I think to plan to fill the position prior to July 1st of 2016 is not in the best interest of students, not in the best interest of the work that's going on and moving the district forward. And if we're looking to get out of Level 4 status, to not follow a process and procedure that is outlined very clearly, and to subvert that does not support what the, we have heard from the state, what we've heard from our MASC, from all these things. And I'm not saying that only people are looking for jobs in September and October, but I think that it makes sense to stabilize where we're at, have a consistent message face to move forward through the next year while that search takes place, while we're able to survey teachers who are invested in the community, to survey parents, to survey and have focus groups regarding, it's great that we know what we want or we've already stated that, but the community should have a voice in that process. And I think focus groups and the entire process of a search includes that and doesn't lend itself to being completed and finished in that short period of time. So as I've said, I am not opposed to a search and getting it underway, but I think the goal of the search should be to have someone in place for July 1st of 2016. And I think the candidate that has sent the resume forward to us certainly should be encouraged to apply to the search committee, not to the school committee, as that's not our role, as well as the superintendent and any other internal candidate that is qualified for the job. But I think we need to go about this in a very thoughtful and deliberate way, as has been stated. This is going to have a long-term impact on our students and probably outlast us. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I just have one question. Do you recognize anybody at the podium on agenda items?
I'm not going to recognize anybody at this time. I have, we'll let this committee speak. I get a chance to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to weigh in on this as well. I find it, well, let me start here. I will not be on the next school committee, so I'm not seeking reelection to the committee. And I am reluctant to start a process with, I think the next people coming on board should have more of a say in the process and what that looks like in the search and all of that. I think that's only fair to give them that opportunity. And if we begin a search, even the preliminary stuff now, that can muddy the waters a bit. I have a real issue with adjusting our timelines to meet somebody else's, somebody who submitted something based on perhaps what must, may be inside information, which is very concerning to me. So I have a problem adjusting a timeline, no matter how qualified a candidate might be. I do think there are candidates who will come to Southbridge. I agree with that. I have been told the search process by the companies that I was able to speak to and by MASC takes six to 12 months to accomplish. And I think it's only fair that the new members of the committee, new member, new members coming on board, have an opportunity to weigh in there, participate in the process from beginning to end, rather than inheriting a process or us making that sort of a decision for them. I fully support a superintendent search process. I think we heard a lot about how it needs to be deliberate, how we need to have focus groups. I don't think there's any disagreement on this dais about that. I just am concerned with how recent events have unfolded and I don't think that the process, I'm just, I'm very concerned about that. So I believe that we need to provide this district with stability. We have heard that from DESI. We've heard that from MASC. A process could begin once the new school committee members come on board and they go through their training, charting the course training, and learn what that's entailed, then you start an active search then, full and complete search involving all sectors of the community. I think that's the way to go ahead and do it. I understand there's frustration here with, you know, there's frustration here. We're frustrated based on a lot of different factors, but I don't think, again, that's any reason to subvert a process or to take on a modified or somehow expedited process because somebody may have requested it or somebody thinks it's a good idea. So, thank you. Mr. Abrahamson?
I move the question.
So now we're moving the question. We have a motion on the floor to, Mrs. Quinney, would you restate your motion?
To extend the contract of Cheryl Stanton through June 30th of 2016 as acting superintendent.
Thank you. Mrs. Congdon?
I request a roll call vote, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll take, is there any further discussion? Nope, we're moving the question. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Levo?
No.
Dr. Page?
No.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
No.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
We have four yes and three no.
Thank you. The motion carries. That motion is obviously pending a contract negotiation. So, thank you very much on that. The next agenda item is unfinished business, 9B, the FY '16 budget. Is there any discussion on that? Any updates? Anything? No? Well, I believe we're waiting for the town council to, the EHS Subcommittee meeting on May 20th. And we will wait for a final number from them before we decide what our next steps will be. Thank you on that. Under new business, we need discussion of date and time of the next school committee meeting. The town manager's office has requested that we move our meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 26th. There is a need for use of council chambers that evening. So our options are either to move our meeting to a different location or have our meeting on a different day. If it was going to be a different day, I would propose the 27th, Wednesday, the 27th. I don't know if there are any thoughts on that.
Is it possible that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible to have it at the high school?
Yes, it would be possible. We could move it if we wanted to keep the meeting on Tuesday.
And it would still be made public, right? Because they still have the capabilities to air it.
I could see if they could tape that, if they could have, I could, no. Mike Montigny is saying, no, they're going to be tied up here. Okay. So, does that change your thought?
Does change my thought.
Okay. Is the 27th okay? That's a Wednesday. Dr. Page?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So we'll set the next school committee meeting on Wednesday, May 27th, at 7:00 PM. Next, we have discussion of a proposed restructure of central office in Southbridge Middle High School. Ms. Stanton.
Thank you, School Committee, for the opportunity to discuss with you tonight a proposal for reorganizing the Southbridge Middle High School. As you know, we have had several meetings where the concerns about several issues at the middle school, high school have been discussed. I want to assure the committee and the public that we have been having ongoing conversations with administration regarding the concerns. This is not a proposal that happened overnight. This was thorough and thoughtful in our approach. And we do believe that we'll move the district and the school forward in our goals to improve the quality of instruction for students, the quality of support for staff, and our Level 4 status. So briefly, the data that we analyzed to create this proposal, we used data from the accelerated improvement plan and the quarterly reports from quarters two and three. We used the Quality School Review Report from School Works, which was completed in April. We also used the SMHS faculty and staff feedback from visits that we have had throughout the year, but mostly last week after the school shared with staff the results of the School Works review. The assistant superintendent and myself went to the high school, middle school, and met individually with staff. We were there for three hours in the morning and then another two hours in the afternoon. And I will say that the staff were very open, very candid in their, both their share of what their concerns are, but also in some creative problem solving as well. So I did want to say thank you to the staff for their participation. I'm still getting stopped when I'm at the high school, middle school, by staff to share their ideas. So this really is a collective effort at making improvement at the school. So very briefly, the concerns that we do have regarding the Southbridge Middle High School from the quarterly reports and the School Works review are a lack of instructional consistency and rigor. And we have tried to address that through feedback and through evaluation. But we recognize that evaluation process and feedback are not leading to changes in instruction. And those are conversations that we are having throughout the year. We recognized through the review of the reports that there is limited support to staff for improving their practice. That is the result of, I think, positions that are being used in other ways than what they were intended because of how we're structured. And lastly, there is a significant concern that we are not providing a supportive environment for all of our students. And that, I think, is reflected in the school committee's goal to address specific subgroup populations, special education, and our ELL students. But also, our general education students also are not receiving interventions that they could use to improve their performance. I think that it's clear we have a very large number of students who are on EPPs, and that's problematic, who are not passing MCAS and therefore have EPPs in place. And we do have a significant number of students who are actually failing MCAS and not even able to participate in EPPs. Concerns that we have discovered through the faculty and staff feedback, there is a belief, and I agree with this belief wholeheartedly, being a middle school principal and teacher, that there are significant developmental differences with grade levels between middle school and high school. These developmentally appropriate interventions for students differ at each grade level, and those are related to academics, the social-emotional development of our students, and also how we discipline students. In addition, from the faculty and staff feedback, there is a concern regarding the school culture and climate. And that is both in how students are responding to the culture and climate and also how staff are feeling about the culture and climate. That is not to say that there is not a dedication on the part of the staff to make improvements, but as we are seeing, there is a frustration in what they can accomplish given the structure. There's a strong need for an individual building principal on the middle school side. Thank you. So the proposal to structure is to redesignate Southbridge Middle High School as a, two buildings, as two buildings, as the high school and the middle school. And to do that, we would need to approve a high school principal to address the leadership role. And we would also be asking for, in green, the instructional resource specialists in both ELA and math. That is to provide the support to staff to improve practice. It is specific to the high school and how they would create professional development and support teachers through coaching and being in classrooms. In addition, how they would lead departments and the discussion around data. With the current structure, there is not enough support for staff in leading those There would also be an addition of an assistant principal, that would be Point Five, and then assume the role of athletic director for Point Five. And we would be moving to make in-school suspension a licensed teacher position. That is in line with our PBIS, our Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. And that is to provide specific support and strategy development in our students around conflict resolution, anger management, how to be successful students. That is a significant need in the school. Next, for the proposed middle school, again, we would be in need of a middle school principal. We would also be adding the instructional resource specialists for math and for ELA. You will notice that we would be adding an adjustment counselor, and that would be to, again, support the need of our middle school students, which is significant in terms of their social-emotional development. And we would also be moving toward an ISS structure that had a licensed teacher that was leading that program. So finally, I would like to talk a little bit about what successful turnaround looks like and what is needed to have successful turnaround occur. It really requires effective building leadership, which balances accountability and support. It requires building leaders who are committed to holding teachers accountable, but providing support to that in ways like coaching and professional development. Successful turnaround requires that we communicate an instructional vision and that that instructional vision should be developmentally appropriate and maybe different at the high school and the middle school level. Successful turnaround requires that we develop and sustain collaborative approach to change. That is extremely time-consuming. It requires a lot of feet on the ground. It requires the building principal to be in classrooms, to be at grade-level meetings. And with the current structure, it is an overwhelming task to be in classrooms providing support to both sides of the building. In order for successful turnaround to occur, we must set and model high expectations for quality of content. That doesn't happen in feedback that doesn't occur regularly because the numbers of teachers that we're trying to supervise rises to the level where there's just not enough time in the day to get the job done. And lastly, for successful turnaround to occur, we need to provide effective feedback and structures for professional growth. Those are different at the middle school level than they are at the high school level. Effective feedback and structures for professional growth, looking at student work models, using a middle school philosophy and approach, holding teams accountable to that approach so that their outcomes are student-centered and our systems are student-friendly and supportive. That is much different than the work that occurs with professional growth of our high school staff. So, again, I am recommending and proposing that Southbridge Middle High School become two unique buildings, the high school and the middle school, with the appropriate structure. There are three things we need to consider when we look at successful turnaround. It is the structures of the school, the instructional practices in the school. And I forgot the third one. It's my dissertation, so I think it's been a long day. But thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Stanton? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Ms. Stanton. Regarding the data analyzed for the proposal, you cited the DESI quarterly reports, two and three, as well as the Quality School Review Report. Having read both of those, I know that there's nothing, it doesn't speak specifically to personnel. Could we make those available to the public so they see some of the data that we have available to us in moving forward with this?
I think that's a conversation to have with the building principal, how we do that. We did share that in terms of a PowerPoint with staff. I would have to go back and really look through that to make sure that, as you stated, there was no direct link to particular, you know, students or teachers. But should there not be? And I think with discussion with the building principal, we could move forward on that.
And what about the quarterly reports?
Can? Yes, we can put those up.
Those be attached, maybe to our, the minutes of tonight's meeting or whenever those were reported?
Sure.
So that the public has some of that information to see the data that is available regarding how this proposal came about. I think that that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through to Ms. Stanton. Has anything been considered relative to the cost of what this proposal would mean in terms of dollars?
Sure. We've done some preliminary budget work around this, given the budget that we are, the environment that we are working in. I believe that we can be creative and have minimal budget impact. I have not had the opportunity to have conversations with staff that that may affect. So I have not moved forward until I had some guidance from the committee that this was something that you were interested in moving forward with. So I can say that our proposal has very little budget impact. I will also say that what you see is not something that's set in stone. I would respectfully ask that the high school and the middle school principal, were this to go forward, have input into the structure. This would be our first look at how to organize the two schools differently. Again, we're under a bit of a crunch and a timeline to get this up and running for the new school year and to have the summer to prepare and plan. So.
Yeah, just a general question that I don't know the answer to. Is this something that the school committee is required to vote upon tonight? Or do you have the authority to inform us and inform the community of this proposed structure and be able to either move, either yes or no on your own? Or do you need school committee approval to change the structure up there?
I believe I need school committee approval because we'll be creating new positions and new school structures.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Abrahamson?
What is represented here, again, going in history, is what people were told would be the structure of Southbridge Middle High School. They were built for that. I think that they, again, politics entered into that. I might, I probably shouldn't say this, but it was that flawed superintendent that made bad decisions that made it one principal. So if a motion's in order to allow the superintendent to, or to have the superintendent move forward with this restructuring, Madam Chair, then I will make that motion.
A motion would be in order. However, you know, I'm waiting to hear from others on the committee to weigh in on it, whether we want to give this some more time, and this is the first time we're discussing it, whether we want to solicit some feedback from?
I withhold the motion.
The community? I'm not sure. Mr. Levo?
I'm just wondering if we should wait for the next school committee to decide on this or not. Seems to be the thing going tonight. One question I have for you, Superintendent, through you, Madam Chair, is we have two principal positions here that are proposed. We already have a principal at the school. Why are there two?
I'm not sure what your question is.
We have a principal at the high school who I am pretty sure she's on for the next three years. We have two positions, advertise a high school principal and a middle school principal. Now, you're proposing that we need to hire two principals.
No.
However, we already have one in place. Why would we need to hire two?
I did not propose hiring. I proposed a structure that identifies two principals.
Okay. I needed that point of clarification. Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Personally, I just would like a little bit more time as well as to digest this. We just received this presentation this evening as well as just the structure on Sunday. And I just, again, right now, don't feel comfortable making this decision to restructure that whole school after receiving this in a brief presentation. I think I need more time to digest it, more time to ask questions, because these decisions that we make in turn affect us in the future. I think previous decisions to restructure the proposed SHS structure has led us to where we are today. And right now, I don't feel comfortable moving on that. That's all. Thank you.
If I may, address, I would say that we spent a significant amount of time gathering information, having School Works come in to give us information about the concerning data that was coming out of the school. I think that we have spent quality time with staff to understand those concerns. And I will tell you that staff agree that having a principal that... And I will tell you that staff agree that having a principal that supervises the high school and a principal that supervises the middle school and provides a very distinct support, which is required, they are in favor of. And I don't make that statement lightly. I think that we've done our due diligence to gather that information and that this is a strong report and a strong proposal to move it forward.
Mr. Olivo?
I.
Can I just go to him and then go back to you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I didn't get to weigh my opinion. I meant to, but I was trying to say something else. I do see it as a need to have two principals and making this two separate schools. The learning abilities are too different and far apart. But this truly needs to be that. It needs to be two separate schools to where, you know, here we're having classes, you know, where we have juniors and seniors being in a gym class or whatever with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And it has happened. And I don't feel, if this is the restructure or the proposed restructure, then we do in fact need to make sure and see to it that this is two separate schools. So for that reason, I do think that as a first look, this is a good idea, but we just, we need more time, I think. I need more time.
Mrs. Congdon and Dr. Page?
Thank you. I do believe in the two-principle structure. However, the more information as well that I'm actually requesting is the budgetary implications of this proposed structure, the job descriptions of these people. I don't want to agree to something that I have no idea what these people are supposed to do, other than a flow chart, as well as the budgetary implications. Because I could agree to the structure, but I don't know how it's going to impact the budget until I see those hard numbers and I sit on the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. So that's another reason why I just want to delay my approval. Not, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of this, but I just feel that I need more information. Thank you.
Dr. Page?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I actually would like to voice my opinion on the fact that I think this is a very sensible way to go structurally in some ways, particularly because I'm a very strong believer in the fact that, as you say, there are very, very distinct differences between immaturity level, behavior level, the approach to education, the complexity of things between students that are in that middle school age group and the high school age group. I would like to have an opportunity to review and probably think about some things to maybe ask some follow-up questions prior to approving this tonight. I'm not ready to approve it tonight. Again, one of the themes that this committee's been talking about a lot is stability and all of this kind of stuff stabilizing the district. I'm very cautious about making decisions that could have stability impacts. The other thing that I want to say on this matter is, is there been consideration of instead of a middle-high school model, a junior-high high school model? And I know there are some districts that do that, and sometimes there's a good reason for doing that in terms of, and it can come down to the nuances of your demographic and the nuances of the students in your district in terms of where they are in the typical ninth-grade level as to whether or not they're really ready to be in a high school building with juniors and seniors and sophomores, or whether it would not be a benefit to have another year, sort of, you know, six, seven, or a seven, eight, nine building and then a, you know, ten, eleven, twelve building that might have an impact on whether or not elementary school goes to sixth grade. From what I'm seeing, from what, in terms of all of the reports that we've been reviewing, is a lot of those kinds of things seem to be permeating through in terms of reports. So that's something I would just like for you to consider and maybe think about, and maybe there's a good response right now as to why that's not prudent. But that's just one comment that I wanted to make about the thing. But in general, I'm in support of the idea. Again, I'm very concerned about budget this year and the timeline with which we move this. Thank you.
So if I may ask a clarifying question. When you reference middle school structure or organization versus a junior high, are you simply stating that organizing the grade levels as a seven, eight, nine is a junior high and organizing grade levels as a six, seven, eight would be considered middle school? So you're talking about the whole middle school philosophy, teaming?
Well, maybe not so much the teaming part. I'm talking about just the age levels in which they're in that environment. So whether it makes sense for six, seven, and eight graders to be in the same environment and you have nine through 12, or whether or not pragmatically development, a lot of things considered that I'm going to confess, I'm not an expert in all of that, but I know that there are reasons why some districts choose to have that model in terms of having, you know, sort of the junior high and high school and then sort of the grade schools are through sixth grade.
Thank you. Ms. Abrahamson?
One of the things that I think was a problem when this was put together as a middle-high school was that putting it under one building and having it called Middle-High School meant that the then Wells Middle School and Southbridge High School were joined together and the levels, accountability levels, became, they affected each other. My question, can we do it right this time? And can we have two separate numbers, number-one school and number-two school? We might have to change the name Southbridge Middle High School, but we can still, can we now separate those two?
And to your point about accountability, I do not think that it is a fair comparison for Southbridge students when we are compared to only students who reside or go to school in a six, 12 school. So if we reorganize as a six, eight, we do gain the comparison of more schools and I think we have a better understanding of where we fit because six, eight, or, you know, five, nine, those grade levels are more, they're more, missing the word, they are the norm. Six, eight is a norm for a middle school. The majority of schools in the Commonwealth are six, eight.
Right. Well, actually, some are actually five through eight, correct?
Correct.
Middle school's five through eight? And, but getting back to my question, can we make them, we will have to rename Southbridge Middle School, can we name them two different things so that we have two separate schools so that the middle school does not affect the accountability level of the high school?
Yes.
That would seem to be a very strong argument for doing this.
Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Stanton. One of the things I was, in listening to Mr. Olivo and Dr. Page, just stuck something in my mind when you mentioned taking existing personnel and, you know, keeping them or putting them in a different place on the flow chart, if you will. Are we under, or is the district under any contractual obligations to notify these personnel within a certain timeframe so as to avoid that whole issue? If we don't notify them on time, that their role may be different for this next school year. And if so, do we know what they are? And does that timeline affect our vote to give you the go-ahead one way or the other on the restructuring?
Yes. The timeline is tight to start. Were you to take a vote today, it would be very tight if you were to wait two weeks to the 26th, or I believe it would be the 27th now. It's not impossible, but I did not move forward any more forward in putting a timeline together to roll this out because I didn't have an understanding from the school committee whether it would be within your goals to make this happen. So if I were to have, you know, a preliminary discussion that said, you know, yes, go ahead and move forward, then I can start to put some of the other pieces more formally together. And that would include, again, I think notifying and having discussions with staff that this would affect.
Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Stanton. If there is this time constraint, does it make sense, I guess to everybody, that we approve the structure and request that you then come up with the budgetary implications and positions, job descriptions, and then that we're saying that we're in favor of this restructure but not with the specificity of those things and to approve the structure sort of as laid out and then next week ask you to present with the budget implications, the job descriptions, and all of that stuff? So I think, I don't know if the committee feels like, because I would hate for somebody to go through, write all this stuff up, and then for us to say next week, yeah, no. It's, you know, so I think we need to provide some guidance, so I don't know how that would best work at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to address that, maybe through a question to the superintendent. These are, I'm hoping, most of these are job descriptions, that you probably have a pretty good idea of what they would be, and I wouldn't, I would hope that you have not proposed this without having a pretty darn good idea of what each one of those jobs is going to be. So I don't know that, is that really a limitation in terms of us seeing that?
I will say that within the HR department, we do have some work to do with updating our job descriptions, so this would fit into that. So there is work to be done there. They exist, but for many, they're outdated, so it isn't something that we would rush, but we would certainly be looking at every single job description, particularly making sure that we address the desire to have effective leadership and effective IRSs and coaches at each level.
Anything else? So we, we certainly, I certainly can put this on the agenda if we feel like we need more time to gather more information. I think we need to provide some actual guidance to the superintendent. Mr. Abrahamson?
I believe what Ms. Quinney said is, makes sense to me, anyway, that we approve the structure and then hear a report from the superintendent in two weeks on how this structure affects the budget and other considerations and hear these job descriptions. But I think just, again, leaving it in limbo, no. I mean, we know that that's structure. We know that we have to change the structure. I mean, everyone seems to agree with that. So holding it up for just the sake of holding it up, I think, is not wise.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Page?
One comment, just for my two cents on that particular subject, I would not be ready to vote this yet tonight. There's one thing that I became aware of through the sort of past year, being the neophyte on the system, is there are some legal implications if you eliminate a position in a public institution. There's a time limit by which you can recreate that same position, and I want to make sure that we would not be violating any kind of issues in terms of the timing of when the original middle school and high school principal jobs were eliminated. Because we would effectively be eliminating a new job that was created then and creating exactly the same jobs that were eliminated. And I want to make sure that we're in a legal framework before we even, I'm not willing to vote on this at this point in time.
If I may, we have researched that and we are within our contractual obligation, so it would not be an issue.
Thank you. All right. So if we don't have a motion, we're not going to take action tonight, and we're going to gather some more information and hear about this at the next meeting, have some more time to absorb the information.
Madam Chair?
Oops, sorry.
I move that we give the superintendent the authority to move ahead with this reorganization and report to us the, all these questions that people have asked at the next meeting. But why would we be arguing this point? Does anyone, I'll move that and see if there's a second. If there isn't, there isn't.
Can I just?
Yep.
Through you to Ms. Stanton. You said, I think you can take the pulse of the committee in that, I would say that my recommendation would be prior to the next meeting and that it be added to the agenda, time certain for the 27th, that the restructure, all the new positions that would be created, those job descriptions and the budgetary implications be presented to us to be voted on next meeting.
Including the structure?
Yes.
So we have?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. So there seems to be consensus among the committee that we need additional information. We'd like additional time to study this. Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay. We'll put it on the agenda for the next school committee meeting to formalize a vote or votes as necessary. Thank you. Last items for new business are the files that were submitted for a first read. There are some revisions apparently that need to be made. If we can discuss those, we will be able to move it forward at the next school committee meeting. So let's take the first one, KCD. Mrs. Quinney, you had some questions, concerns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's filed, KDC. The first issue I have is number two, A and B. It has a blank line regarding the value of said donations accepted gifts. So I would request that we fill that in.
Okay.
Also, it refers to throughout the policy itself, under 2B, it says the board's approval. And it also speaks about the board under Implementation Section B, Board and/or City Schools. And I think we should change everywhere it says Board to Committee as, and instead of City Schools, change that to Southbridge Public Schools. And at this time, I would ask people come up with a number that y'all are comfortable with under 2A and 2B.
Dr. Page?
Yeah, I had exactly the same ones on the board thing. It's one of the reasons I pulled it out. And as far as the number goes, my personal opinion, and I would like to defer to the acting superintendent to see what works well in that capacity or possibly the finance director. My personal opinion is I would like to see donations that are in the $500 and above range come to the committee. Things that are $100 here, 50 there, or whatever, I don't think that we necessarily need to see that. I don't have a good feel as to what the relative incidence is, so I would like to ask through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent, to weigh in on the number that would work for you.
I believe 500 is an accurate number for us to bring forward or receive on behalf.
So we just put $500 there, so anything less than? If it's $499.99, then we don't need to see it. If it's 500 and above, that makes it clear? Okay. Thank you.
Everybody agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alter the policy accordingly and make those revisions. Are we all set on KCD? KDC, I'm sorry. No, KCD.
KDC.
KDC, sorry. I think it's actually KCD now that I'm looking at it.
It's different. It's different on here versus what's on the agenda.
Yeah. We'll get that, it's an existing policy. I think it's KCD, actually, is the existing policy, so that's just a revision to it. Okay, so we'll move on. We'll make that correction as well. So move on to improvements to school property by youth organizations, booster clubs and other organizations. This would be a new policy filed under the Facilities Section of the manual. And, Mrs.
Do we have to vote on that?
Um.
It's just the first reading?
It's a first reading, so we can make some changes or revisions or whatever. No, that's okay. If there's something to be said. Basically, for the public's knowledge, the school committee has a legal responsibility for the funding and maintenance of school facilities. So the committee, after study, may permit youth organizations, booster clubs, and other organizations to make improvements to school property. All improvements would be made under the guidelines set forth in this policy, and improvements would be the property of the school system. And it delineates what the criteria would be for that and district enforcement and regulations. A lot of districts, most districts seem to have a policy that is similar, and our, in reviewing our manuals, ours lacked such a policy, so we brought it forward. Are there any changes here? Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one simple thing, under 2F, it says the Director of Maintenance, and I don't know that we have a director.
Yep, good catch.
Supervisor?
Yep.
And then under Regulations, maybe it is, right, but it says that, well, the superintendent responsible for maintaining regulations that establish the process for receiving. I'm not sure if Regulations is the right word or if it should be Procedures.
Yeah.
And maybe the category...
And maybe the category itself, instead of regulations, should probably be procedures. And that's all I had.
Everybody okay with that change? Okay. So we'll revise it accordingly. Excuse me, I'm sorry. The next agenda item is member forum. This is agenda item number 11. Any members? Ms. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, the PTA had asked me to reach out to the community. The PTA will be doing Reach Out and Read Day on Thursday, May 28th. They're still looking for community readers to come into the schools at 9:00 AM. They're looking for six to seven readers at Eastford Road, West Street, and Trouton Street, six to seven readers for each school, and four readers at Eastford Road School for the 12:30 preschool class. If you're interested in coming in to read for an hour to the students for Reach Out and Read Day, please contact Kelly Spinelli of the PTA at southbridgepta@gmail.com if you're interested in participating in Reach Out and Read Day, and it's a lot of fun. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of announcements and a couple of questions. The first thing that I wanted to announce that was on Saturday, May 23rd, at the YMCA, starting at noon, Espira is going to be having their fourth annual fundraising volleyball tournament. And I know that they're looking for people to try to get their teams together and get organized for that. The cost is $10 per person, and all the teams must have at least five players, but no more than eight players on a team. And they're looking for students, parents, school faculty, staff, members of the local community to come together and to, to be as a team for this. And if you have any questions relative to that, the lovely lady Jill Marie Flores Rivera is coordinating that, so you can contact her if you're interested in registering. The other great thing that's happening next Monday, May 18th, from 6:00 to 7:00, at the Jacob Edwards Library down in the children's room, we have 25 of our third grade students that, whose art is going to be placed on exhibit down in the library. And they're going to be having refreshments and a little recognition for those grade three art students, so it's free to the public, and if you'd like to go down and see their artwork and support our kids, next Monday from 6:00 to 7:00. The next question that, the next two things that I had were actually questions through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent. Last week, I was at a, a public event, a soccer game, and a local parent had asked me about paper, or the lack of paper, and I, at the time, didn't know anything about it. And her student, her son was there with her and explained to me how it was explained to him. And I just didn't know if you could clarify or bring us all up to date, if there are paper issues in our buildings.
Sure. It's known as the paper apocalypse. It has been averted. We have delivered cases of paper to the school that is in request, so we do ask that people continue to request paper. You know, paper is something that you don't ever want to run out of, but it is expensive, so we do try to put some control on our paper consumption, so that message may have been confused or misunderstood perhaps as we don't have paper. And we do, we are, we do try to control it. I think that the, the current photocopy leasing and our ability to identify users, and therefore, you know, have conversations about paper consumption is important as we, as we move forward.
All right. Thank you for that. And the other question I had was just if you could give us an update or the status of the credit recovery program at the high school. You know, we had had a presentation that they were going to be having some Saturday classes, and I didn't know if that has happened, and if kids, if it was successful or not that we have kids that are, you know, will be able to graduate as a result of that program.
Sure. Is Principal Earl still here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know.
So, the question, if you don't mind coming forward, is regarding credit recovery. I'll speak a little bit as she comes forward. There are two programs, the math, which happens during the school week, and then the program that's happening on Saturdays.
Okay. So what was the question? I'm sorry. I just was looking for a status of it, to see how, how it was going along and how the kids are doing.
Attendance is not as high as we would have hoped, but we do have the math program running. We do have one teacher teaching the math program twice a week. Attendance varies by week. We believe we'll have approximately 14 or 15 students who may earn their credits that way. I am doing the Saturday morning program, which runs from 8:00 to noon on Saturdays. We've had two Saturdays already. We have two more coming up, this coming Saturday and the Saturday after, and I have seven students who are on target to earn either English or history for that.
Okay. So we have two more weeks looking out, and then that program will end?
Yes. It, it has to end senior weeks, because we need to assign the credits.
Right, right. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm all set.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One reason that I'm glad that these meetings are recorded and available for reviewing is that I have a chance to look at presentations such as the quality progress report given by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we had at our last meeting. There was much discussion about high rates of suspension at the middle high school and how to handle the bad actors among our students. What seems to be missing from the discussion is that a school is not just populated by students, there are also adults in the school. Is it possible that there are some bad actors among that group? Now, Madam Chair, make no mistake, teaching is a very hard job, and I am sure that most in our middle high school are making it work successfully. Then there's another group of teachers and staff who may not be as successful, but among those, I am certain, there are many who want to succeed. Good teachers who deserve all the support we can give them. The next thing to consider is that there just might be some bad actors among the group. These are the teachers and staff whose reaction with the students may be, just be the cause of some of the high suspensions, refuse to deal in a professional manner with the students, and can, as any teacher knows, purposely light the fuse in a student with minimal self-restraint, causing the inevitable explosion. The student may react as expected in the classroom and swear at the teacher, for example. Then the teacher can write up that student for swearing, and he or she receives a suspension, raising the suspension rate. Perhaps the same student holds it together until he or she gets out into the hallway and then explodes. Someone writes the student up, and the student is suspended. The student may hold it together until he or she gets to the next class, and then some innocent teacher becomes the recipient of the explosion. Some bad actors among teachers and staff, Madam Chair, can cause chaos throughout the entire school, and then conveniently, they can blame the chaos for the school not gaining any ground. Madam Chair, it is the building management who must discern which are the bad actors, if any, among the teachers and staff. To do so, they can also look at data. Are there any patterns to the referrals? Do some teachers make more consistent referrals than others? The data may just provide a clue to bad-acting staff and teachers, and may inform building administrators as to their evaluations. Madam Chair, I'll close with this. There are those who believe that the key to what ails our middle high school is stronger discipline toward the students. Throw them out, suspend them. Any enlightened educator knows that is not the answer. Teaching today is far more complex. Determining the bad-acting staff and teachers, if any, may just be the key to our middle high school's success. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else for member forum? Nope. Okay. Tonight, we will be having executive session, so we need a vote to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the governance bargaining or litigation position, and the chair so declares. I do so declare. Also, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I would need a roll call for this, please.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Donovan?
Yes.
Ms. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Ms. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Oh, yes?
Thank you. We will return to open session to resume a few items on the agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you. We are resuming the school committee meeting of May 12th, 2015. The time is 9:22 PM. The school committee has returned from executive session. Note the presence of all school committee members on the dais, and Superintendent Stanton. With that, we're going to resume the agenda with agenda item number 13. This evening, we are not going to ratify, we are not going to take action on agenda items 13A or B. That leaves us with agenda item 13C, a vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement, memorandum of agreement with the Southbridge Education Association.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you want to just tell the public what the dates of the agreement would be, or? Sorry?
Sure. They would be July 1st of 2014 through June 30th of 2017.
Any other discussion? Nope. I would request a roll call on this agenda item. Do lean.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Donovan?
Yes.
Ms. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Ms. Congdon?
Abstained.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
We have six yes and one abstention.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next item is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Abrahamson, a second by Mr. Olivo. Show of hands, all in favor? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.